We'll call the meeting to order and welcome everyone here this evening. This is a joint meeting of the Town Board and the Planning Board seated at the front table there for the purpose of public hearings. The procedure is that we hold the hearing and then the Planning Board at their pleasure meets afterwards or not depending on, you know, what they choose to do. Sometimes if the meeting runs or the hearings run a little long, they've had enough for the night so they'll come back later to discuss it. But that's up to their discretion as to what they want to do with that. I did want to introduce, we have a new Planning Board member tonight, Shannon Baxter. First meeting, glad to have you and appreciate you willing to serve. Thank you very much. We have a request by the Weaver's Pond Development Company to remove SU 2018-02 from tonight's agenda and it would then be proposed to be held, a public hearing in September. It would be re-advertized and newsletters would be sent out to interested parties. So I would request a motion from the Board to grant them that.
I make such a motion.
Second.
Motion made, second, are the comments of discussion? All in favor? And the motion carries. So, the Weaver's Pond Development is not going to be heard this evening. I don't know what you folks are here for, so, but you're welcome to stay anyway. The other public hearing is a... Well, that's one way to clear a house. Okay. The next public hearing is a special use request, special use 2018-01, a request by D.R. Horton Incorporated to obtain a special use permit for residential subdivision located 1904 Zebulon Road and the zoning is now R-20. I would say that this is, for the record, that this is a special use hearing which is different from your other types of zoning. And I know that y'all have heard this before, but I want everyone in the audience to hear it. It is a quasi-judicial hearing and it means that any type of ex parte communication is in violation of the intent of the special use. That is all the way until such time as a final decision is made. The Planning Board will make their recommendation at some point, but the restriction on quasi-judicial still remains in effect until this Board makes its final decision. Staff will go over some of the parameters that we have within that, but I'm obligated at this point to ask any member of the Planning Board or the Town Board if you've had any outside communication on this matter. If you have, let me know. Okay, alright. So, having said all of that, I will call SU 2018-02 into order and ask for staff report.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
State your name, please.
Julie Spriggs. I'm with Town and Zebulon Planning Department. I'm a senior planner and the address is 1003 North Arendal Avenue, Zebulon. Is this better?
Yeah.
Let me move my books around and try to get the microphone closer to me. Alright, better?
Yes.
Alright.
Thank you.
So, the first slide is to put the report, the staff report, the agenda, plus all attachments, to be entered into the record for the hearing tonight, the PowerPoint, and I do have an extra attachment tonight to add. I'm getting ready to hand it out now. This will now be Attachment 12 in the agenda. the beginning preliminaries of this, but it will be Attachment 12. It is a letter from the NCDOT, the Congestion Management Services, with their recommendations for the TIA as well. I got this tonight at 5:00 in an email, so I'm passing it out tonight just because I want to make sure that you have all the information that we have and it wasn't included in the agenda because, as I said, I just got it tonight. It does uphold everything that staff and the developer has talked about to this point and it does uphold the TIA recommendations that both WSP and Accelerated Engineering have talked about in your staff report and in the agenda packet. So, to begin, the special use 20,018-01 is for Tarran Creek. It's a residential subdivision located off of Zebulon Road, which is also called North Arendal Road, but this is a little bit farther out of town, so it switches to Zebulon Road. The request is by D.R. Horton. The property is owned right now by Watson Family. The pens, the acreage, and the current use is vacant. The existing zoning is R-20 and it is for a residential subdivision. This part of Tarran Creek will only have 60 homes. That was not enough to trip the TIA requirement, but they're using the same entrance as Tarran Lake, which was Phase 2 of the Tarran Meadows subdivision operating under a different special use permit. Because they're operating the same entrance, it will be adding over 100 trips, so we asked them to do a TIA. It was submitted and reviewed and we'll get to that here in a little bit when we get underneath the transportation. So to the north, you have D.R. Horton and it's a vacant property. To the east, you have more D.R. Horton land, it's also vacant. To the south, you have the Sharon Residence and it's part of the R-13 SUD and then Special Use District and then Marion Bobbitt is to the west with a single-family dwelling and she is zoned R-20, which is residential. The area in yellow is the parcels that are on the application tonight. This is Phase 2A that was just recently platted through the final plat process of the Tarran Lake subdivision. Watsonia Drive here will connect over to Watsonia Drive in Tarran Meadows and then come down onto Proctor Street. So this is Tarran Meadows, this is Tarran Lake, and then this will be Tarran Creek. This will be the entrance to Tarran Creek here off of Sea Holly Drive and then this is the entrance to 96 or Zebulon Road. This is the site plan, it's the proposed site plan so far for the subdivision with the road layout, a couple of cul-de-sacs, a couple of cross streets, two stub outs for future subdivision, and then the entrance here to Sea Holly and the entrance here to Required findings of fact, the Board of Commissioners should not approve a special use permit unless the Board makes the following findings of fact, that the proposed special use will not materially endanger the public health, safety, or welfare. The proposed special use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. The proposed special use will be in harmony with the area in which it is to be located and the proposed special use will be in general conformity with the ordinance's policies, land use plan, thoroughfare plan, or any other plan officially adopted by the Board of Commissioners. The applicant bears the burden of presenting evidence sufficient to enable the Boards to make the required findings of fact and those in opposition of the issuance of the special use permit bear the burden of presenting their evidence. That one of the standards set out above of those four will not be met. In your application, there are, in your agenda packet, there is the application and there are nine questions that we call findings of fact for the application that help support those four statements and I'm not going to go over those answers tonight. They are pretty lengthy and detailed, but they are found in the application booklet and in your staff report, we go over some of them, but the answers staff felt were adequate and if you have any questions about them, we can go over them tonight, but in the essence of time, I'm going to skip over that unless there's questions from the Board. For the zoning, the special use district promotes land use compatibility. The rezoning to a special use district is considered concurrent with a special use permit application and this land will be rezoned to R-13 SUD. Most of the surrounding properties are zoned residential. The remaining parcels are zoned either heavy business, general business, or light industrial. The residential districts are designed to secure persons who reside there in a comfortable, healthy, and safe, pleasant environment. Most of the properties around the area are zoned residential. The business-industrial districts are both a little bit more remote, but they are on the map, so I do have to include them for you so you know what the breakdowns are, but the immediate area is all residential. And the proposed special use district is located on a parcel and surrounded by parcel zone for such use. So this is the zoning map. You see the red hatched area, which is the request. The numbers on the map go with your list of notified property owners. As you can see, the yellow is residential, R-20. The hatched, yellow striped, is the R-13 SUD for Tarran Lakes and Tarran Meadows here and this would be Tarran Creek. The heavy business down here, a little bit of the industrial, and then the R-40 and watershed across the street here. The rest of it's residential. You've got a little bit of the business here and some more residential down here. So that's why I said most of it is residential zoning and then the heavy business and the lot industrial are just scattered throughout. For the land use, the comprehensive plan suggests the parcels surrounding the area contain a mix of uses. The most that are close to the request area are the medium-density residential and a little bit of the mixed use. The proposed special use district conforms to the intent of the comprehensive plan. The reason why we say that is some of this area is not included in the comprehensive plan. The district stopped as we had not done the ETJ expansion before we did the land use plan, so the ETJ stopped here and is not included in the comprehensive plan, but it does match the intent with the medium density surrounding and the mixed use here. So, staff confirms that the comprehensive plan does conform to the special use application. Important limitations on imposing conditions, the ordinance must provide authority to set a process to impose conditions. The ordinance must include standards that conditions will address. Substantial evidence in the record must support conditions actually imposed and conditions that are imposed in exaction must be reasonably related and proportionate to the impact of the development. A condition cannot be imposed just because a council thinks it would be a good idea or because it is desired by the neighbors. Any condition that is imposed must be purposed to bring the permit into compliance with standards that are included in the ordinance and all conditions must be based on meeting a relevant standard in the ordinance and the conditions must reasonably relate to that standard. Staff has proposed 65 conditions for the development. The developer has agreed to all the proposed conditions. This PowerPoint will highlight just the proposed conditions, but not go over each one individually. If members of the Board, the public, or staff would like to discuss proposed condition not provided in this report, please feel free to do so. The proposed conditions list has been provided tonight as an audience handout for this very purpose. They are over by the town clerk on the corner of her desk. The agenda and all attachments were made available in the Planning Department office online and emailed to anyone who asked for the link. Developer included proposed conditions as part of their submittal. Staff proposed several changes to the conditions and the developer has agreed to staff's changes. Condition number 12 in their packet, we reduced the height of the secondary signage. Condition number 33 in their packet, we reduced the timeline to 24 months for starting of the recreation construction rather than 36 months. In condition 34, street signage must be decorative. Condition 38, we changed the Mitchell 50 watt series. Condition 44, we struck from the record. Condition 47, we added a 10-foot Type C buffer along the southern property. In condition 60, we fixed the equation where it was wrong in the submittal packet. Staff proposed conditions also includes the turn lane recommendations from the TIA. The TIA was turned in after they had submitted their application, so they did not have the recommendations as part of their proposed conditions. They had a general condition stating that the TIA, they would do whatever was recommended. So the transportation plan shows a two-lane road with a wide paved shoulders and a sidewalk on one side of the roadway. Sharing an entrance with Tarran Lake, Tarran Creek will add over 100 trips, so a TIA analysis was required and submitted. Tonight, we have Mike Sarasky in the audience, says our third-party expert review for any expert witness testimony that he might need to give or answer any questions you have on the TIA review that we did at staff level and we do have the representative from Accelerated Engineering here tonight for the applicant, so you can ask questions of them as well for their expert witness testimony. And then you have the NCDOT document that I just handed out from the CMS for the same recommendations and all three, developer, staff, and the NCDOT review, all reveal that we agree on the three turn lanes that we had asked for, which the turn lanes at NC-96 and Proctor Street, Raleigh Hill Road. It's 100 foot of storage with appropriate deceleration in taper lanes at 96 and Proctor Street, Raleigh Hill Road, a northbound left turn lane on the 96 side, and a southbound left turn lane on NC-96 at the site entrance of Tarran Lake and Tarran Creek. For the greenways, the Town's adopted greenway bicycle and pedestrian master plan does not plan for any greenway quarters for the proposed development. The master plan shows open space throughout the development and there will be connections of sidewalks to the Tarran Lake and Tarran Lake has sidewalks and trailheads to the quarter number one, leading from Tarran Meadows and connecting Tarran Lake and then connecting Tarran Lake over to the Weaver's Pond section of the, what we're doing with the part of Grant. Water and sewer allocation policy, the industry standard for the water and sewer usage is 250 gallons per day. The water and sewer allocation request for the applicant is for a maximum of 60 homes, so it would be 15,000 gallons. Staff is proposing water and sewer allocation requests to be handled at the time of the final plat process so that we wouldn't have to come back before the Board with you tonight. You could just approve that and then we could handle that at the final plats. We would limit allocation approval ensures the Town that reserves the allocation for other requests and prevents overallocation and this also allows for better tracking of allocation versus the actual usage. Actual usage is normally not 250 gallons per day, but for allocation purposes, we use 250 gallons per day. Any unused allocation will return to the Town, so if they do not have a maximum of 60 homes and they do less homes than whatever is unused, we'll return back to the calculation for us to allocate somewhere else. For the recreation amenities, there is some, oh, that slide is wrong. Let's skip that one. For this, what it's supposed to say, they will have not a community pavilion as it shows or two ponds, but they will have a playground and the playground is supposed to be for the age ranges of playground equipment for 2 and 5 and 5 to 12 and they will have playground amenities, benches, bicycle racks, and race stations and they will have three separate dogway stations between the open spaces and the playground area. Sorry about that. For the general statute with the architectural restrictions basically on the Board, the state building design elements may not be applied to structures under the one and two-family dwellings except under certain conditions or circumstances. Unless voluntary consented to by the property owners, the special use permit is considered a voluntary consented process, so we can do some architectural design elements as part of the special use process. There are some things that are exempted, the historic district, the register for historic places, regulations of safety code and the National Flood Plane. So building design elements in this case is exterior building color, the type of exterior cladding material, roof structures or porches, architectural ornamentations, doors, including garage doors, styles of windows, the number of rooms, and the interior layout of rooms. That does leave us some things that we can ask for. Part of those things that we can ask for, we have included in the proposed conditions list. They have been agreed to by the developer. Staff is proposing that no portion of the lot shall contain wetlands, repairing buffers, floodplain, or floodway. We're also proposing that the exterior building materials be brick or stone, veneer, vinyl or fiber cement, such as the hardy plank, and that the 50% of all homes must have a front facade comprised of brick or stone equal to a minimum of 33% overall coverage. Staff is also proposing that foundations be unslabbed on grades, stem wall, crawl space, or basement determined by the site grading and the topography is determined by the builder. Staff is proposing a condition that the heated square footage be a minimum of 1,400 square feet, 1,400 square feet. Staff is proposing a condition for all homes to have at least a one-stall garage. There will be a site plan approval. The development shall be subject to site plan approval through either the technical review committee or in-house review, whichever is appropriate. If they bring the playground equipment in separately from another phase, that would be an in-house review. If there's no stormwater needed, if the stormwater has already been part of the TRC review for the previous phase. Generally, for the subdivision, the playground or the mailbox kiosk are the only things that would go through the in-house review. Everything else would be done under the technical review committee. Other proposed condition topics are the homeowners' associations. We have setbacks, landscaping buffers, environmental concerns, mailbox kiosks, and the fire code and blasting concerns. They're all addressed in the conditions list. The findings of fact we have is completed. The zoning is completed. The land use is completed. The transportation has been completed. Greenway bicycle and pedestrian master plan has been completed. Water and sewer allocation has been completed. Recreation amenities, ordinances, and the proposed conditions. As far as staff is concerned, we looked at everything. We think it all complies and it's up to the Board to hear evidence and decide if the conditions proposed or if you want to impose other conditions or as the application is without conditions. The staff recommendation, the application was completed properly. The property notification requirements were met for the joint public hearing. We don't make recommendations on the special use petitions until we have heard all the evidence being entered into record. Tonight, your requested action is to refer this case to the Planning Board. The requested action of the Planning Board tonight at their meeting is to recommend the case back to the Board of Commissioners and to make a motion on the approval or denial of the 2018-01 case. The Planning Board should motion on the recommendation of approval or denial of the case. If approved, the Board may not make findings of fact, but if denied, the Board must vote on each specific finding and state a reason as to why the finding was denied. Only one finding must be denied to oppose the permit. If approved, conditions, if desired, whether agreed to by staff, the developer, the Boards, or otherwise, should be stated in the motion to approve. So these are your quasi-judicial requirements. I read them earlier into the record, but this is just up there for reminder and the choices is also, again, just a reminder in a table and we can move back and forth before forward through these as we need to and that is the staff report for tonight. Any questions?
You out of breath?
I am.
Okay. Are there any questions from either Board of Julie? I have one, if you would go back to the proposed street map. You said, well, I think that's one, you said Watsonia is going to tie all the way through.
Yeah, Watsonia is this street up here as you can, it comes off here and ties through here. So this is NC-96 here, this is Rose Mala Drive, this is Sea Holly Drive coming down and then Rose Mala comes up here and terminates in a cul-de-sac. Watsonia comes off here, wraps around through, this will be Phase 2B of Tarran Lakes. It has not been through the final plating process yet, but it has construction approval through TRC. Then Watsonia will continue on down here into Proctor Street through the Tarran Meadows subdivision.
Well, I think that's really good. Initially, I understood that it was not going to tie in. If that's incorrect, then so be it, but I'm glad to do that or to see that, which brings me to my concern here, which I always have, one way in, one way out. You've got 60 homes in there with only one way and so if something happens in that intersection, emergency vehicles are blocked with police, fire, EMS, whatever. So I would like for our Planning Board to take that into consideration and give us their opinion on that because that always bothers me. So that's my comments on that.
Alright.
Other comments or questions of Julie? Yes ma'am.
To ask questions about...
Shannon?
You need the mic.
Sorry, you need a microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Maybe that's just my husband. Okay, so I'm not sure if this is the time to ask questions about the actual TIA report or do we do that later?
Well, you can ask, you can do it later or you can wait until they actually, petitioner actually gives their, it's up to you either way if you want to, but I'm assuming the petitioner is going to present that information.
The petitioner would like a chance to present and then bring up their team and once they introduce Gavin, you may...
That would probably be the more appropriate...
And then if you have questions of our review, we can bring up Mike, who is our reviewer for the third party and he can also answer questions as counted to Gavin.
Great, I'll just do it.
Okay, great.
Okay. Any other questions from either Board? Are there any questions of Julie from any interested party? And let me stop to explain now, I didn't do this earlier. All testimony is sworn testimony, so anyone speaking would need to come forward and do the microphone, identify yourself, give your address, and then also be sworn in by our clerk because as I said earlier, this is quasi-judicial hearing. Questioning, I will call for questioning as I did here first from either of these two Boards and then any interested party that wants to ask a question of the person giving testimony can do so as well. So, hearing no questions of Julie, I would ask anyone wishing to give testimony in favor of this petition to come forward.
And so what they're going to do is just bring up the whole team and if you'd just swear them in one at a time while I get their PowerPoint up, that will help the transition.
Alright, I'm Kathryn McPherson with ESP Associates and our address is 5121 Kingdom Way in Raleigh, 27607.
Let me swear you in first.
Okay.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Alright. What I will ask is when each of you come up to speak, if you will state your name again so that when the transcription is doing the minutes, they will know who is speaking.
Solomon Mosom with ESP Associates.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Good evening. Gavin Tang with Accelerated Engineering.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Gavin Tang with Accelerated Engineering.
Alright. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Frank Reynolds, D.R. Horton, 2000 Ariel Center Parkway, Raleigh, North Carolina.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
As I stated, good evening, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Chairman. I'm Kathryn McPherson with ESP Associates in Raleigh and I'm representing D.R. Horton for this rezoning case. I would like to thank you both and the members of the Board of Commissioners and the Planning Board for the opportunity to discuss this case tonight. So this request is to rezone a 17.34 acre parcel currently zoned R-20 to R-13 SUD. So this request is to rezone a 17.34 acre parcel currently zoned R20 to R13 SUD. The development adheres to the Town Comprehensive Plan, the Greenway Master Plan, the NC 96 Access Management Plan, and the Zebulon Multi-Mobile Transportation Plan 2035 update. Currently, the land is vacant. It is surrounded by residentially zoned land, zoned R20 and R13 SUD. Road access to Highway 96 will be through the Tarran Lake subdivision and also the Tarran Meadows subdivision to Proctor Street. The R13 SUD zoning will allow us to have up to a maximum of 60 single-family homes. It is the site, oops, let me get this, is located within the town's ETJ, the dividing line is 96. Tarran Meadows here and Tarran Lake are both zoned as R13 SUD and the rest of the sites surrounding our property are R20. The Town of Zebulon's Land Use Plan, which dates to May of 2008, predates a zoning map and designates this site as a Zebulon Short Range Utility Service area, so it didn't really have any land use associated with it. In our conversations with town staff, they indicate that medium residential use is consistent with the intent of the land use plan. And R13 zoning is defined by the Town Code of Ordinance as "single-family detached residential development at medium densities with access to public water and sewer." There is a small portion of our site that is in the mixed use. There's a, it kind of doesn't follow the property line and the rest is in the R20. The properties along the western and southern portion of the site are zoned R20 and the parcel to the south is designated as mixed use. So the large parcel between our site and the corner of Proctor and 96 is a mixed use parcel. The properties to the north and east are part of Tarran Lake with 97 home sites and Tarran Meadows with 98 home sites and are zoned R13 SUD. The Comprehensive Plan in Chapter 6 Housing in Neighborhood states that Goal 1 stresses the importance of providing a variety of housing types, sizes, and price points. Tarran Creek's architectural examples provide a range of one to two-story homes with similar architectural features, colors, and materials. Homes will have a range of bedrooms from three bedrooms up to a possibility of five. Goal 2 encourages new neighborhoods to support pedestrian and bicycle connectivity. Tarran Creek will provide sidewalks on one side of the street and will connect with the sidewalks in Tarran Lake, which in turn then connect to the Greenway system. This is a slightly more detailed plan of Tarran Creek sitting here with its road network, Tarran Lake, and existing Tarran Meadows. This is Watsonia Drive. It currently ends right about here. And this is Rose Mallow and Watsonia, which will connect and connect here. We propose connecting here at Sea Holly Drive and will have access to 96 here and Proctor Single-family residential development is recognized by the town as a permitted and expected use for this area. We are going to stress interconnectivity by providing two stub outs in addition to our connection here with these parcels to our south for future development. We also will be connecting to the water here at Sea Holly Drive and sewer here behind Lot 74 within the Tarran Lake subdivision. So our site will connect to public water and to sewer and through our road network, we will extend that water and sewer to our stub outs, thus providing connection for future By utilizing the existing roads of Proctor, at Proctor and at 96, we won't be adding any additional driveways or street cuts along 96, thus reducing turn movements that would add congestion to that area. Tarran Lake has a mailbox kiosk that has been approved in this location and Tarran Creek will be utilizing the same location. We will just be adding additional mailbox units to meet the new homes. We will provide a seamless transition from the adjoining neighborhoods through the similar style, size, and price points of the home that are being built in Tarran Lake. The, the development fees from this project will help reduce the merger fees that Zebulon is currently obligated to pay the city of Raleigh. Once that obligation is complete, water and sewer rates for all the residents in the town may be reduced, thus providing a financial benefit for the entire community. We did have a real estate consulting firm take a look at home prices and the effect of these new homes on home values in the area, and they identified eight D.R. Horton communities around the triangle and compared the average sale prices in a one-mile ring from those communities. The study results concluded that the average sale price increased an average of 11% compared to the triangle region's increase of only 5.3%. Accelerate Engineering, who's here tonight, our representative is here tonight, has performed a TIA traffic analysis and we have agreed to their recommendations of the additional turn lanes that would be on the, both in the north and the southbound here along 96 at Proctor Street. And there's already road improvements occurring with the Tarran Lake development that is also agreed on with the turn lane. All of our internal streets will be residential collector or local streets as required by the Town of Zebulon Transportation Ordinance. Sidewalks will be provided on one side of all streets and should be designed and constructed to meet the town's standards. This is another example of the master plan. We intend to have at most 60 single-family homes and construct it in one or two phases. The maximum density will not exceed four units per acre. We're going to have four to five internal streets, some cul-de-sacs, the stub streets. We will, excuse me, we will be preserving open space along this wetland area that is bisected by a road, but we will not be impacting the wetlands. We're providing stormwater management devices, ponds, as needed once we get into the actual We will be providing a mini park located in this area that will comprise various recreational elements such as swing sets, climbing structures, and other activity centers for children. We will provide a 20-foot Type C buffer along this property line and a 10-foot Type C buffer along this property line to provide separation from the adjoining properties. Our development standards for our lots are front and rear setbacks of 20 feet, side setbacks of five feet with an aggregate of 12, and a corner side setback of 15 feet. We will be extending public utilities into the site. Whoops, I'm going the wrong way, sorry. There we go. This shows where our utility connections will be. There's currently an eight-inch water line being constructed here that we will connect to and take into our site. And there's an eight-inch sanitary sewer that we will stub to from that manhole. We will then also provide, as I said earlier, water and sewer connections to the adjoining At our entrance on Sea Holly, where it joins with the Tarran Lake subdivision, we will be providing an entry monument column. It won't really have a signage. It might have a plaque of some sort with some kind of a logo, but it'll be offset from the sidewalk and just be a placeholder. Playground equipment will be similar to that. I'm now going to ask Frank Reynolds with D.R. Horton to come up and present.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, Town Manager. My name is Frank Reynolds, Land Acquisition Manager for D.R. Horton. This is my first time getting to meet you. I've met staff prior to. I've not met the zoning staff though, and again, good to meet you. We've been in the Town of Zebulon now going on a little over six years with Tarran Meadows, our first venture into Town of Zebulon, and then we have expanded upon that with another phase, Tarran Lake, which as Catherine had described, is already under construction. Just to kind of give you a real quick update, we have just sold our first home in Tarran Lake. We opened up for sales just over a week ago. Great sign, great price. It's, it's, it's obviously a big thing for us to be able to get a sale within the first week of opening up, so that's huge for us. So we do see the demand. We're actually seeing a demand at a higher price than we had originally thought, being that the first one out of the gate is probably at our highest sales price that we have gathered at this point in the Tarran Meadows area included. So this is all looking towards our product and how we expand this product and what the demand is. At this point, it's an Express product. D.R. Horton has four different products. We have an Emerald product, a D.R. Horton product, and a Freedom Home product along with the Express. Each one of those are different levels and in each one of those, we have levels of those. This is bordering on the higher level of Express and we've actually pushed it into our D.R. Horton product level with upgrades interior and exterior with elevations. And I would say that we're venturing into our next product level, but right now what we're showing is the Express home and we're going to move forward with the Express home at this point unless we see more of a demand for some of the finer things in life with our Horton products. So, and I apologize, truthfully, I have better renderings than the ones that are shown. Hopefully, you've been out on site and you've seen some of our product in the Tarran Meadows side, and we do have about 10 homes going on right now in Tarran Lake, but you, they're all at different stages, so you really don't get a good idea of what that is going to look like. But in my next presentation, I'll have better renderings. We've had a professional photographer take pictures of those and they're more suitable for a presentation than the old colored drawings. But it's a beautiful entry. It's a beautiful elevation and we, again, hope to expound upon that. The buyers hopefully will be looking for more. We believe they will. We love this location. We love the Town of Zebulon and everybody that we've worked with and the staff and we look to find other opportunities as well going forward.
Okay, let me stop there and see if anyone has a question of either of the first two speakers. I'm sorry, I didn't do that when she finished. Any questions from either of the boards of the first two speakers? Okay, any questions by an interested party in the audience? Yes, sir, you need to come forward and...
My name's Stuart Bobbitt.
Let me swear you in.
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Get your name and address, please.
Stuart Bobbitt, 1112 Bishopton Way, Knightdale, North Carolina, 27555. I'm interested in my mother's property that had joined this in 1908, Zebulon Road. So the 20, I just have one question. The 20-foot buffer that's going to join this property, is there going to be a fence that comes up behind it like you did in Tarran Meadows that joins the property or is it all nature or what's the goal?
Ma'am, I'm sorry.
You need to speak into the microphone. I'm sorry, we record this, so.
Sorry, Catherine McPherson again. Frank, you might be able to speak better.
You need to get to the mic, please.
It will, the buffer will be comprised of what is required or recommended by staff. At this point, I'm not sure it's going, there's an element of structural buffering involved in that, but whatever is recommended by staff, we will do. So that's kind of where I'm going right now. I won't promise anything more than what staff recommends at this point.
I do know that there is existing vegetation there that we would be hopefully maintaining as much as possible.
Well, we, the previous design had, with the previous owners of the Tarran Meadows subdivision, had a fence put in. Just trying to verify what's going to be there for the board. All right, thank you.
Other questions? Okay, thank you. Anyone else then that wishes to speak in favor or give testimony, I should say? Okay, hearing, hearing none, are there anyone, is there anyone that wishes to speak or give testimony in opposition? Okay. Hearing none, then we will refer the matter to the planning board for their consideration. Yes?
I do believe the board had some more questions, I think Shannon.
Oh, I'm sorry, Shannon.
More questions of, for the TIA, so now would be your time.
Need to strike something at me, so you... Yes, no, you need to just get the hand on.
Okay, so the environment, has there been an environmental impact study done for this?
Yep.
Yes, okay, all right. And so the TIA was done during 100% precipitation and I'm assuming that during different weather conditions, we can expect there to be more or less traffic involved on the road going and coming. Can you give us an idea of whether that's usually expected to be elevated or lessened and how is that going to impact what the recommendation is?
Again, Gavin Tang with Accelerate Engineering, we are the traffic consultant conducting the traffic study. Man, to answer your question, the traffic study typically do not consider weather conditions. The, the traffic that's generated, the amount of traffic that's estimated that will be generated from this particular site is based on the National Survey for Similar Development based on the number of units. It's an overall generalized estimate of the, of the amount of traffic on a daily level as well as a peak hour level. It has nothing to do with the weather conditions.
And the traffic ratings that were rated as Fs and Es in your study, the recommendations that you put forth are going to, in your opinion, successfully increase the ratings to at least a D or above in every situation?
The intent of the traffic study, just generally speaking, is typically to maintain, do no harm if you will, to make no worse than the no-bill condition because we are considering the future. In this particular study, I believe we are looking at 2021 or 2020. So we are looking at, first of all, we are looking at what would happen in 2021 without this particular development, what kind of traffic conditions we will have there. So in the, the intent of this study, after everything's said and done, is to at least maintain, if not improve, that condition. So based on our recommendation, we believe, we do believe that the, with the recommendation proposed, this government will maintain or improve the no-bill condition.
So I'm understanding that you're not guaranteeing or suggesting that something that has been rated as an E is going to get any better than an E, that it may, but you're not saying that it necessarily will.
If you look at the study, is, I think this will be a little bit longer also than you may look at. We look at different locations. There are actually locations in the area where we do anticipate there's a problem, but the problem is not really caused by this particular development. In our study, we look at the 2021 conditions. In that, in that future year, we look at both the natural background, growth, SBS, ask, the honor of site development, in particular, there's Viver's Pond development further north, and that development will generate, is probably four times, three, four times bigger than this particular one. We do anticipate a lot of problems will be caused by that development, in particular at the intersection of 96 and Pippin Road. But because, because the problem that, that we are going to have at that particular location is caused by external development or background growth, not necessarily...
Did you read that last portion? I didn't understand what you said.
What I'm saying is the, the problem, there might be locations in the study area where the problem is not necessarily caused by this development. So in that, in that case, we do not recommend improvements by the developer.
Okay. And I guess my last question is, does the TIA report 2% growth estimate take into account current approved growth rate in Zebulon? Or how have you come across the 2% growth rate?
That's a good question. Whenever we look at the future, we are predicting the growth, and no one has that crystal ball. So whenever we do our study, we actually call it, it's supposed to town staff, as we ask NCDOT to come up with a consensus, a number that everyone agrees upon. In this particular case, we assume a certain growth factor, but also we take into account, on top of the growth factor, we take into account the Viver's Pond development, that will, that will be adding traffic to the study area. That's typically how we handle the future growth projection.
And is the growth projection based on the number of residences? Or is it just done with the actual car count traffic?
It is based on, I would say based on a combination of both historic data, looking at the historic average daily traffic volumes for this area, as we ask the input from the town, from the DOT, and as you can judge.
Okay, great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let me, hold on, is there anyone that has any further questions? I kind of jumped the gun, I apologize, Shannon. Okay, any further questions at all? All right. Then what we will do is refer the matter to the planning board for their recommendation. I need to specify again that there's no further evidence that can be offered. You can't question the petitioner any further, you have to go basically what's been presented into the record here. You can't do investigation on your own. And I say this for the boards which know this, but the audience as well. I mean, the quasi judicial methodology is pretty strict, and certainly, again, no ex parte communication. So with all that having been said, I will close the public hearing, and we will refer the matter to our planning board for their recommendation, and I will ask for a motion for this board to adjourn.
Subtle.
May the second, thank you very much.